Okay, the time is now 7:05 and I would like to call the Beloit City Council meeting to order at this time. Can we have a roll call, please?
All councilors are present.
At this time, we all stand for the pledge.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Special orders of the day and announcements.
Item 3A is a proclamation declaring May 21st through the 27th as Emergency Medical Services Week.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, I'm pleased to be able to do this. An official proclamation from the city of Beloit. Whereas, emergency medical services are vital public service and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, the council president of the Beloit City Council does hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through May 27th as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme, EMS Strong, Always in Service. The city council further encourages the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Presented this first day of May 2017, Kevin D. Levy, President. And here we have Chief Liggett to accept and share a few words with us.
City Council, City Manager, thank you very much for this proclamation. I'd like to introduce some of my crews that are here tonight to help accept this recognition. We have one of the best, or if not the best, paramedic program in the state of Wisconsin. We have the most advanced medical care, we have the best equipment, we have one of the most progressive emergency physicians to be our medical director, and we are very blessed with being one of the leading agencies in the state in providing emergency medical care. With me tonight is one of my paramedic coordinators, Jessica Flanagan, Mike Sawarzoff, one of our paramedics, back in the corner, Paul Schill, a paramedic, Lieutenant Dan Blazer, former paramedic, his experience continues to carry through the department every day, Marge Pelisi, one of our paramedics, firefighter, or excuse me, acting lieutenant, EMT Jason Griffin, and paramedic captain Dave Furger. I want to express my appreciation to them and the other 60 members of the Beloit Fire Department for getting out there every day. You know, as chief of the department, I have the ability to influence policy and attitudes and things like that, but the face of our department are the folks on the street, and they work extremely hard under some crazy conditions at times, and interact with our public in their worst possible scenario. And I'm very proud of them and the work they do, and I'm very proud to be able to lead this department, and thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you.
Item 3B is a proclamation declaring May 14th through the 20th as National Police
I have Chief Sobolski joining me. An official proclamation from the city of Beloit. Whereas, police services provided in our city play an integral part in the everyday life of community members, and whereas the dedicated men and women who on a daily basis protect us, defend us, and serve as guardians are highly trained and committed to public safety, and whereas the support, trust, and cooperation of an involved community is vital to the efficient and effective operation of community policing practices and programs, and whereas the health, safety, and quality of life in this community greatly depends on these programs, services, and employees providing them, and whereas the city of Beloit Police Department incorporates modern-day community policing practices focusing on their role as guardians by proactively engaging our community to create unity, build and sustain trust, and enhance the overall safety of the city of Beloit, and whereas all members of the city of Beloit Police Department recognize and take seriously their sworn duty to serve the community by safeguarding life and property, protecting all against violence and disorder, and working in partnership to enhance public safety, and whereas we proudly honor and pay tribute to the ultimate sacrifice of past city of Beloit law enforcement officers while gratefully acknowledging the daily sacrifices of our present officers. Now therefore, the city council president of the Beloit City Council does hereby proclaim the week of May 14th through May 20th as National Police Week in the city of Beloit, and calls upon all residents and civic organizations to appreciate the contributions which these officers make every day to our health, safety, and quality of life. Presented this first day of May 2017, Kevin D. Levy, City Council President. Chief Sobolski.
Thank you very much for the proclamation on behalf of the police department. I humbly and graciously accept, we have also a very good police department here in Beloit with a strong community policing culture that has really started to take hold. I'm very proud of the men and women of our department and on a daily basis, the selfless sacrifice that they incur on the work that they do. So, you know, we're really moving in a very good direction there. Couple of things for your calendar for Police Week. On May 18th, Thursday morning at 10:00 a.m., we'll have our second annual Beloit Police Department Award Ceremony, where we'll be recognizing not only some really great work by the men and women of our department, but a vast number of citizens of our community who will also be recognized. And we'll also be receiving a portrait from our retirees, so they'll be there as well. After that, we're going to do a new department photo, and at 1:00 p.m., we are hosting the Rock County Law Enforcement Memorial Ceremony. We'll have the Attorney General Brad Schimmel as our keynote speaker, so it'll be kind of a fun day of events honoring our officers both locally and nationally, and really a good showcase for the city of Beloit as well to have all those folks in. So again, I thank you for the proclamation and the recognition. I know that personnel in our department are very grateful to know that they have the support of our elected officials and city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 3C is a proclamation declaring May 21st through the 27th as National Public Works Week.
An official proclamation from the city of Beloit. Whereas, public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' quality of life, and where it is vitally important that all of the stakeholders of Beloit understand the importance of the programs and services the Public Works Department delivers to our community, and whereas such programs and services could not be provided without the effort of a dedicated Public Works staff who plan, design, build, and maintain our roadways, provide public transportation, maintain our urban forest, provide clean, safe drinking water, collect and treat wastewater, maintain parklands, provide recreational programs, maintain community structures and facilities, remove and dispose of solid waste, and provide other services which are essential to a high quality of life, and whereas to better educate the public, Public Works staff will showcase the equipment used to provide the services above and explain what services and programs are available through Public Works on Saturday, May 20th from 8:00 to 1:00 at the farmer's market in downtown Beloit. And whereas this year's theme, Public Works Connects Us, celebrates the vital role Public Works plays in connecting us all together, and whereas this year 2017 marks the 57th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, the council president of the Beloit City Council does hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through May 27th as National Public Works Week in the city of Beloit, and encourages all residents, community organizations, and civic leaders to recognize and understand the positive impact that the dedicated Public Works staff makes to the quality of life in the city of Beloit every day. Presented this first day of May 2017, Kevin D. Levy, President. And we have Bill and Patty here to accept for us. Do you have a few words?
I just wanted to say thank you for the proclamation, and I hope to see all of you out on May 20th for our kickoff to Public Works Week at the farmer's market. You can interact with staff, we'll have equipment, and all the divisions will be representative so you can see what we do every day.
Are you given rides?
No. Thank you.
But you can get in the trucks, I've been inside with the kids, yeah.
Thank you very much, and thank you Counselor DeForest for those presentations. Item 4 is public hearing.
Item 4A is a resolution approving the vacation of Penny Lane in the city of Beloit, Rock County, Wisconsin.
Ms. Christiansen, please.
We received a petition to vacate and discontinue Penny Lane, which is a dead-end street along the east side of the 1900 block of Bootmaker Drive. It was originally dedicated in 1962 as part of Bootmaker Manor subdivision plat, but when Turtle Creek subdivision was developed, it wasn't required to connect through, and as a result, it currently ends at the rear lot line of the property at 1970 Pebble Drive. If this is vacated tonight, it will become attached to the adjacent parcels on Bootmaker Drive. One of the petitioners has a parcel address of 2260 Penny Lane, which we changed to 1965 Bootmaker Drive. This, all required public notices were distributed and published, and we sent this out to our review agents. AT&amp;T, Alliant Energy, and Charter have noted the presence of utility lines in the affected area and have requested a blanket utility easement over the vacated area. The city's other review agents did not submit any comments or concerns, and Plan Commission reviewed this at its last meeting and voted unanimously 7 to 0 to recommend approval of this vacation.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open up the public hearing on item 4A. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on item 4A? Please come now, state your name and address.
This is Tom Dolan, I'm at 1981 Bootmaker Drive. My parents bought the house in 1968, and I recently moved back from Missouri, and my mother passed away a couple of years ago. I moved back last year and purchased the property for my family. And we've been maintaining it, mowing the lawn and maintaining it since then, so I would like to build another garage there, that's why I put the petition in.
Okay.
All the neighbors I've talked to all around, they're all for it. Everybody's happy about it, so.
Okay. Thank you. Second call for item 4A. Anyone else would like to speak on item 4A? Third and final call for item 4A. Seeing no one, I would close the public hearing on item 4A and entertain a motion from council.
Motion by DeForest.
Second by Duncan. Any council discussion at this particular moment? Seeing no discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 7 to 0. Item 4B, please.
An amended conditional use permit to allow the removal and relocation of office space in the DH Development Holding District for the property located at 2100 Newark Road.
Ms. Christiansen.
This property currently has a conditional use permit from 2014, which was amended in 2015. This is for Three Franks Services LLC, who own an asphalt paving company and are located at 2100 Newark Road. They're currently operating their business out of this location. They did build a 2,400 square foot office and storage addition already, and now they would like to remove two existing office spaces and convert an existing garage into an office space. This is considered a major change in the use of the property, so it's coming back through with the public process, which is one of those standard conditions I read all the time. And Plan Commission did review this at its last meeting on April 19th and voted unanimously 7 to 0 to recommend approval of the conditional use, subject to the conditions which are listed on the resolution before you tonight, which are that the conditions imposed on the applicant's 2014 conditional use permit, as amended, remain in full force and effect. This amended conditional use permit allows the removal of two existing office spaces and the conversion of an existing garage into an office space. The applicant may continue to rent the existing single-family dwelling on site, but must maintain a rental registration certificate. The applicant shall obtain an architecture review certificate and a building permit prior to converting the garage into an office space, and then the condition that any major changes come back through this public process, and minor changes can be approved administratively. And Three Franks did take on a site back in 2014 that had a lot of tires and trash. It's an 11-acre site, and they cleaned it up and did a really nice job, and so we're really happy to see them continue to expand their business.
Thank you very much. This is also a public hearing. I would like to open the public hearing on item 4B. Is there anyone wishing to speak on item 4B? Second call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4B this evening? Third and final call, seeing no one, I would close the public hearing on item 4B and entertain a motion from council. There's a motion by Blakely, is there a second by Presso? Any council discussion? Counselor DeForest. That turn y'all?
Yeah, no, you're good. Thank you. I just wanted to comment, I was really pleased with the work that was done before, they had come, oh, sorry, am I not? Okay. They had come to us before with some of the changes, I think it was two years ago now, and went out there to look at the site and was really pleased with the changes that were made, so I'm happy to proceed with more changes to the site. They did a good job the first time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments or questions? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Item 4B passes 7 to 0. Public comment. We have reached a point on the agenda where we have public or citizen participation at this time. I do have three individuals that I will be calling, but this is a time in the agenda if people would like to speak. Anything that's kind of not related to the agenda or even on the agenda, this is your time to come forward and speak. We do ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. I will not cut you off at three minutes, but I'll give you a friendly gentle reminder that you've approached that mark, because we want to make sure we hear everything that you have to say. But we do ask you to refrain from any personal attacks on councilors or staff. I will be honest in saying that does happen, I will end that presentation at that time, because we want to make sure that we're all being professional and courteous to one another. So with that being said, our first speaker is Edwin Armstrong. You want to state your name and address?
Sure. Name is Edwin Armstrong. I live at 2945 South Paddock, Beloit, Wisconsin. I serve on the Golf Course Committee, and presently the chair of that, and also president of the men's club at Kruger Haskell. A couple of things I just wanted to mention to the council. We on the Golf Course Committee have asked occasionally about maybe the possibility of either being invited to a workshop, and when the golf course comes up, in or else, if it's possible for somebody from the council to meet with us. We meet on the third Wednesday of each month. It is rather early, 7:00 a.m., so if that's too early for some, we totally understand. The second thing, if I could just bring up a couple of things for calendar as well, the Beloit Memorial Invitational High School Tournament will be coming up, May 5th, that's this Friday, starting at 8:06, I think is the first tee time. I think there's somewhere around 100-plus golfers around the state. It might give a great opportunity if somebody from the council or city manager's office could be there greeting some of these folks. Again, it's a highlight of Beloit to be able to host this high school event. Another, much smaller event will be May 15th, and that's on a Monday. I think the first tee time's about 8:42. And of course, like any golf event, there's a sudden rush of a lot of people coming in, but there'll be a lot of family, as well as coaches, and probably some others. It would be nice to, you know, if that's possible. The other thing, the last thing that I want to mention is if by chance the council's going to do some sort of a workshop in the future that you consider Beloit, Kruger, Haskell out there, we have a new concessionaire, and would also be a great opportunity to support Tom, who's our new, Tom Hankins, who has Suds Ohana. So just want to make that invite to you guys, and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I have one question for Mr. Armstrong.
It's a really simple one. What time does your Friday event get underway for the high schoolers?
Let's see, this Friday's first tee time is 8:06, so a lot of the students that will have early tee times will come in probably an hour beforehand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The second person is Phil Wilson.
Wasn't this many in front last time I was here, like a couple of weeks ago. My name's Phil Wilson, I reside at 1030 Pleasant Street, apartment 3414. I've only lived there about three or four weeks now, so I get confused. But my talk tonight is the same thing as it was last time, about mental illness. I'll talk about myself. One out of five people are struck with some type of disorder in their lifetime. It's 20%, so I'm sure I'm not the only one in this room that's struck with some type of mental disorder. I'm bipolar, and it happens to a lot of people, and it seems to go through families, and my family's one that it's went through also. And it's kind of difficult for me to come up here and talk, but once I get rolling sometimes, I can go forever. But this is a new thing. I'd like to speak to some of the students down at the Beloit Memorial sometime on drugs, alcohol, and gangs, and, which I hate. I hate illegal drugs and gangs, I hate them with a passion, and I don't think there's one person in this room that would dislike me for that, especially the chief of police. And over the years, the worst thing I've ever done in my whole life was to start drinking alcohol at the age of 13. Your brain isn't even fully developed until the early twenties, and if I can encourage anyone not to start it, don't start. It's terrible. I can't say too much about alcohol, but it's, I'm 16 years without drinking any alcohol except for drinking some, I was a six-pack of Beck's beer about three months ago. I just, my doctor wasn't in to Carl, and couldn't get into convenient care. I said, "This is it." I drank, the first one tasted really good, and after three, I was pretty well on my way. But hopefully that'll be the last time I drink alcohol, and I suppose my three minutes are about up. But I tell you, it's, I'm just starting to have a little fun in life. I listen to music, I'm a musical fanatic, rock and roll fanatic, I just love rock and roll, and that's just the way I am. And if you folks ever want to talk to me about anything, I do have a book out, it's called The Broken Life of a Manic Depressive Disorder, and my whole life's in there up until about six years ago, from birth, and it explains what I've been through, and my family, and so I guess we'll drop it at that.
Okay.
I was a surprise.
Thank you very much.
I was a surprise, that's all I can say. That's the first shift.
Thank you very much for your remarks. It's good we have somebody speaking up about mental illness and its prevalence in our society, so thank you.
Thank you. There's more people talking about it these days. It's not as silent as it used to be. There's a big stigma about mental illness. Used to be cancer was a stigma, now it's dinner table talk. There are treatments and even cures for cancer these days, but mental illness, there's no cure for it, but you do with medications, and it's taken me 39 years to realize that. It's a, if the doctor says take them for the rest of your life, take them for the rest of your life, or you're going to end up in a mental institution, and I've been in plenty of them. And there's no, I don't want to visit another one, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The last person that I have a sheet for is Bill Dor.
Bill Dor, 836 Church Street, and with the new council members being here, I guess sometimes I feel like the historian at times, but I would, one other time I came here and talked about that we used to put committees together, and that was people's first chance to get their feet wet in government. A committee could be set up for, at one time, there was one that was set up for recycling, and we got maybe three or four times, it was Public Works that came, and there were some people, but it was their first opportunity to, you know, then later served on boards and later went to work and run for councils. Some people that were on Save Our Streets committees and things like that, so it was their first opportunity to get them involved. On the recycling one, the newspaper was there, and we'd be, that was when we got the blue bins, and so the newspaper was there, and everybody was aware of it, and then it would have been the Friday before the vote would have came, the Beloit Daily News came out, Bill Baling came out with an editorial stating that, you know, we shouldn't get involved in recyc, I mean, they always looked into the future and could really see very well, so that you shouldn't get involved in recycling and the amount of cost and the things, you know. And so it's just, you know, that kind of debate or those types of things that happened, and people were aware of it. There's so many things I think about how to have conversations about, be it the logo, which is, you know, another one where we could, I know Jim Andrews, I know the guy from Jim Printing, and you just get these, it's maybe a three or four meeting, you know, it's just to get advice, and then to give you information, you're getting information from the city, get information from citizens. And in our case, there always was either a staff person or even a council member there, so it wasn't like it was too unruly. Yeah, so I just bring that up again, and I think Nancy probably served on quite a few when we did like Beloit 2000 in the beginning and all those, I mean, it was, I guess I recently had lunch with Joe Heck, who was an old city planner in Beloit, and I asked him, I said, "Is it me, or did we get in your office with Steve Gregg who worked for the college?" And there was Steve Larry, a guy by the name of Wolf Bertling, but we'd sit, and it felt like a paintbrush. I asked Joe, I said, "Joe, was it just me, or were we like with a paintbrush of what we wanted to do for the city of Beloit? We downzoned our neighborhood, we've got a stark preservation." And Joe said he remembers too, he's retired now as a city planner in Racine, and he looks back at that as being one of his favorite times, that so much got accomplished. I mean, it was just taking a subject, put it out there, get some people together, come up with some things. Whether the, you know, stark preservation failed two or three times before the council before it was finally passed. So it was a way to go through the transitions to figure out what was best for the city of Beloit. I just mention it when we have these little things that come up, that the committees were kind of fun, and it was our first chance to get involved, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else willing to speak on citizen's participation at this time? Seeing none, I would close that portion of the agenda and move to item 6, which is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be enacted under one vote unless there's a council that would like anything removed from the consent agenda. At this time, I will ask, is there anything any council would like removed from the consent agenda? Consent agenda right now consists of items 6A through 6G. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I'd like to request that item 6G, as in girl, be removed, please.
Item 6G will be removed from the consent agenda. The consent agenda now consists of items 6A through 6F. Is there any other council who would like anything else removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 6A through 6F. Is there a motion at this time? Motion by, for back, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Blakely. Any council discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving that portion of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that portion passes. Item 6G, please.
Item 6G is a resolution approving intergovernmental agreement between the city of Beloit, Wisconsin, and Rock County, Wisconsin, for the provision of paratransit services.
I know Michelle's here.
Right, I can speak to the generalities as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a specific question I need you to hear?
No, I just thought it would be helpful for the public to receive a report from Michelle.
Okay. Try to make it brief. So when you So when, when you see the big buses running around town, in the simplest terms, because we get federal funding, it comes with some strings and one of those strings is that we have to ensure that our public transit is fully ADA accessible under the Americans with Disabilities Act. So although every one of our buses are fully accessible, the buses themselves are, and our facilities are accessible, what is not always accessible is the system itself. So some individuals need specialized transportation to get to and from their location. They may have physical issues related to curb and gutter or the cognitive ability to navigate on their own. So for many years now, the city has contracted that portion of our service and we have been contracting very well with Rock County Specialized Transit, who are extremely professional. We have no issues, no complaints, we have no capacity concerns. They maintain a fleet of very safe, modern vehicles and it's by far the most cost-efficient mechanism for us to provide that service and that happens to be very safe and passenger-friendly. It so happens as well. Rock County Specialized Transit also provides service to the city of Janesville. And if you remember, we have a service that we operate jointly with Janesville Transit. We operate the Beloit-Janesville Express. So by this partnership, it ensures that if somebody's getting on Rock County Specialized Transit and they have an appointment or business that they need to go to in Janesville, they can travel there seamlessly without having to get off of one wheelchair accessible minibus and onto another provider. So it's, it's been a very successful partnership for many years. So this is just simply, you know, a continuation of an existing intergovernmental agreement that's before council for approval, so.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval?
A move of approval.
Motion by DeForest, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Anderson. Council discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, that passes. Seven zero. Item seven, licenses, please.
Item seven A, A is a resolution approving an operator's bartender's license for Whitney Walraven.
Hi, Captain Dan Racine from the police department. I oversee the patrol division, for those that I don't know. One of my assignments is to sit on the Alcohol Beverage License and Control Committee, where we take a look at the backgrounds of alcohol beverage operators, bartenders, as well as licensed establishments. The applicant filled out her application on around February 21st. I received it in addition to the literally hundreds of new and renewal applicants that I looked through and we conducted a background investigation. When I look at the application midway down, it lists or requires you to list any convictions or laws or ordinances that you have incurred during the past five years. The applicant included one conviction for a DUI offense is what they call a WI in Illinois. Right below that is her affirmation statement that the applicant affirms that everything on the application is true and accurate and then she signs it. When I got the background packet, I located the DUI conviction the applicant indicated occurred in 2015. The conviction actually, excuse me, occurred in January of 17. The offense occurred in 2015. Part of that offense also involved an implied consent violation where the applicant refused to submit to a chemical test of her breath or blood. So there was a second conviction that went along with the DUI. There was a third conviction that occurred in Rock County, Wisconsin in May of 15 for operating motor vehicle without proof of insurance. When I had the first alcohol conviction, I looked through the background further than the five years. In 2003, I located another OWI conviction. This one occurred in Winnebago County and that happened on July 15th, 2003. When there were multiple OWI convictions, it's been practiced that it shows an established pattern of behavior, whether one was in 2003 and one was in 2017, that an alcohol offense occurred, I denied the license. I exchanged some emails with the applicant, reaffirmed my denial, and she appealed it through the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee. That committee couldn't come to a consensus and referred it to you.
Okay. Thank you.
May I ask the captain a question?
Okay, hold on, let me, let me, let me do this. No, you're fine. What I want to just kind of summarize is say, the police department, if you noticed in the resolution, the police department has denied the request. The resolution is in the affirmative, so therefore if you vote yes, you're voting to waive and provide her with the bartender's license. So I want to make sure that that's clear. The resolution is an affirmative, so voting yes for the resolution will be in favor of giving, waiving and giving her the bartender's license. I just want to make sure that all councils are clear on that note. So with that being said, what I would like to do is get a motion in second to get this on the floor to even discuss. So is there a motion and a second to move this for discussion?
Someone.
Motion by Blakely, second by Duncan. Counsel discussion at this time. Counsel Blakely?
Yes, Captain, I wanted to ask you, it shows in, in the documents we have that the applicant completed the Safe Serve Beverage Course. Do you happen to know, is there anything in that course that speaks directly to people who may have, I'm not saying that our applicant does, but may have a drinking problem or at least had some trouble with the law over alcohol use? Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could answer that question?
You're in.
Okay. The Safe Serve Course is designed to inform bartenders or anyone that's going to be serving alcohol of the laws related to the sale of, it is not a program to discuss any particular problems within a particular person if they have any issues with alcohol and the like. So it's just meant to inform them of what the responsibility is under the law regarding service of alcohol.
Any other council questions or comments? Counsel DeForest.
Thank you.
I got you.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to make a distinction too that Ms. Walraven will still be able to serve alcohol. She will just not be the person who is the primary operator who will be able to serve it without having someone else there overseeing it and responsible for it. And I do echo the concerns I shared at our last meeting that given the nature of the offenses and their relation to the responsibility of this license, that I still strongly recommend that we not approve this license. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Preschel.
Actually, if I may, I just wanted to mention that it would be a good forum to allow Ms. Walraven to speak to this council since she did not speak to this particular council at the last meeting. Perhaps you thought of that already. I just wanted to point that out.
Counsel Preschel.
Yes, I was going to ask if it was appropriate for us to ask Ms. Walraven to address the council?
Sure.
Explain.
Before we bring her forward, are there any other council or questions or comments as relates to the merits of the resolution before we bring her forward? Seeing none at this time, if she would.
At this time, I'd like to clarify, the reason I suggested we tabled this last time, we had a, we had a five-person council here and we could have voted three to two in the affirmative and she would have lost. And I didn't want to put her through that. So we're all here tonight, the entire council, we can make a decision that has some, you know. Okay, thank you.
Hello. Whitney Walraven, 409 Central Avenue, Beloit, Wisconsin. I'm here today to appeal the recommendation to deny my alcohol operator's license for the city of Beloit. The initial concerns provided to me in writing were connected to the lack of convictions identified on the initial application. In my defense, I emailed Captain Racine and explained that there was an error in his findings due to the date of 2003 and the written communication I was provided by him stated 2013. The date of my first OWI conviction was in 2003, therefore it was outside the five-year mandated reference on the application. Additionally, I was never given an actual charge of implied consent according to the paperwork that I received from McHenry County. The conviction that I noted on my application was the OWI or DUI from 2015. That was everything rolled in together. That conviction did go through in January 2017 after I went through the court process. I have attended my victim impact panel. I have paid my dues. I have, I'm in the process of getting my classes going, which is another requirement in order to get all of this behind me. Sorry. I just want to make sure I cover everything here. Again, the implied consent was a new language to me. So again, the convictions of the 2015, 16, 2017 mentioned at the last council meeting were all from one incident, as I wanted to just clarify. I'd also like to note that the OWIs were 14 years apart. The first one took place when I was 20 years of age. I am not living a reckless lifestyle. I do not condone drinking and driving and I am embarrassed that I even have to stand here and explain myself to all of you. The concerns that have been mentioned include the council has not had anyone else to date, according to my information received last on the 17th, regarding an appeal to deny a server's license. So this is the first time it seems that it's being presented to you in this way. I understand that it may be difficult to let go of previous common practices and that you're concerned about setting a precedent for the future. I'd like to note however, that the concern of setting a negative precedent does seem void. What you will be showing the community is that if you want something, you have to fight for it. You have to, even more so, you have to earn it. You have to prove yourself worthy. As Counsel DeForest stated on the 17th, holding a server's license is a privilege and it's not a right. Yet I do find it ironic that we hand licenses out to 18-year-olds who are not even able to legally drink. I also find it ironic that I was able to volunteer my time as a bartender for the Oktoberfest in 2016 and I had little instruction or supervision during those four hours. There seemed to be comfort in knowing that I can still work or serve without a license. Unfortunately, you are failing to realize that by restricting me from obtaining my license, you are limiting the hours that I am available to work, the tips that I am able to collect. All of my shifts now must be shared due to my inability to work without supervision and therefore you are also restricting me from the opportunity to advance my professional career as a licensed professional in the food and service business. I have worked in this, under the supervision of a licensed professional now at the tavern for the past three months. I have had no warnings related to my serving abilities and I have acted responsibly and professionally with the patron's safety always in mind. To close, I do find it disheartening that after all of my professional successes in the Beloit community, that my driving record from another state is what's hindering me and my ability to provide for my children to the best of my ability. I would like to think that my personal experiences could continue to be used to help others and that my positive success can continue on despite the change of my industry. Thank you.
Any council discussion? Counsel Blakely?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Walraven, you were very well spoken and I commend you for working to further your professional career by coming forth. You showed a lot of courage in doing that. I believe you've shown a lot of courage in continuing on with your work, you know, after the trouble with the law. I would like to ask you, although you cited something I wasn't familiar with in the way of a class, do you have any plans on attending any sort of class that might help you further avoid future OWIs?
As a part of the requirement for the OWI that I was convicted of, yes, I will be attending 20 hours of classes. I will be doing community service work, which is nothing new because I've been doing that for the Beloit community for quite some time. I've paid my dues financially and I've attended my victim impact panel. So I'm already on the road to getting all of this put behind me. But yes, classes are part of that.
Thank you very much. I would like to double check with the attorney, if I may. If by any chance Ms. Walraven's request is denied this evening, at what time would she be able to reapply?
There is a one-year waiting period after date of application to reapply.
May I just note that differs from the information I was given on the 17th. I was informed that by Ms. Stotler that actually I could go and imply any time after a denial. You told me I could literally come in the very next morning if the denial went through on the 17th. You had stated that to me and Sue Hudson was with me.
This council though, if you have a, if you take issue with the decision of this council, you need to appeal that to the circuit court by a writ of mandamus. So there's an appeal process if you'd like to pursue that in circuit court. But reapplication to this particular council without any change in circumstances would probably be futile.
Okay, I'm just saying that that differs from what I was informed of.
The information that I gave on that was prior to a council appeal.
Counsel Preschel.
You're aware you've made, made serious misjudgments in the past related to alcohol and your own, you know, behavior with it. And I'm not really concerned about the circumstances of what happened then. I'm more concerned about your awareness of your responsibilities and your, and your faults in those matters and your willingness to, to accept that and sincerely attempt to make sure that never happens again. Because we as a council, if we approve this, if that should happen and something happens in the next six months to a year, or even two or three years, it's going to come back looking like we didn't know what we were doing. And we don't want to have that happen. We don't want to set a precedent here and I don't think we will. This is a unique case. That's why it's an appeal. That's why it never happens before. So I'm not concerned about that. But I am concerned that you as a person understand the seriousness and the sincerity you need to bring to this, you know, to this appeal. So, thank you.
Let me just jump in here. I have a couple of things. First of all, if we decide, if this council decides to move forward and grant her the waiver, then to me personally speaking, then the onus is on her. If she decides to go out and get another OWI, that's not a reflection of the council. We listened to what we, the facts, based on the facts, we made it an educated decision. So then that, it's not going to come back on us. But as far as setting the precedent, even though this may be the first time that we are listening to this case, there's, there could be somewhere down the road other cases that come along just like this that maybe not fit the exact same circumstances, but a person could have an OWI or DUI within the last few weeks or something. And I just don't like to be going all over the board when we are trying to make a decision. The other piece is, and as Counsel DeForest stated last time and I agreed with her, that when you get licenses and stuff, it's a privilege. It is definitely a privilege. So yeah, we do hold people to a higher degree of standard, whether that's, you know, to me, that's fair. I think this council previously, when I sat on it and even presently, have taken a tough stand on places that sell to underage people. We have taken a strong line on there, working with the police department to make sure that our citizens remain safe. And I'm not saying that you're going to do anything wrong, but I think by this being a privilege, that we need to take a hard look at this. As far, I'm comfortable with the fact that even if you don't get the waiver, you still can make a livelihood. And I think at the beginning, that's what was coming out, that we didn't think she could make a livelihood if she didn't get the bartender's license. I think at the last meeting when we talked about that, I was comfortable with saying, okay, she can still make a living. You don't, you may not get the tips, so you have to share with people, but you could still make the, you could still make a living. I stick to the fact that this is a privilege. It's a privilege that a lot of people want. It's a privilege that I think we have to guard. And I commend you for what you've done. I commend you for the professional organizations that you've been involved in. That's, that's, that's great. But also caution us in saying, we can get involved in professional organizations and sometime, and I'm not saying that you're doing it, so don't take it that way, but we can use that to say, I belong to all these great organizations, you should do it because I belong to all these great organizations. So I don't want us to get pulled into that. We need to look at the merits of this and vote accordingly. Counsel DeForest?
Thank you. I would also like to echo that. I appreciate your efforts to serve the community and to rectify your personal and professional situation. And this is not a reflection on, you know, a judgment necessarily on you as a person. This is a privilege. It's a license that comes with responsibilities and I see my role as a city counselor to make a decision about who can hold that privilege and responsibility with the utmost responsibility. And this most recent conviction is recent enough that it raises concerns for me. For me, in my mind, culturally, it's not good for a person in my position to make decisions based on how nice the person is or how many good to make decisions based on how nice the person is, or how many good things they do for the community. We've seen some damage done to our community by having that kind of mindset. Oh, they're a nice person. Oh, they're doing great things. Um, but if they're not competent in that specific area that we've entrusted them, that's not okay. And so, um, I base my decision on the convictions. I base my decision on how closely the nature of them is related to the responsibility of this license. So I'm just underscoring that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Anderson?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, that's kind of the same thing I was thinking too, is that it's so recent that, you know, if you can hold this job a while and stay out of trouble and come back to us, I think that really show us that you will take the right steps to, you know, have the possibility to get this license. So I think you'll just kind of, you know, if this doesn't go through, to just kind of show us that we made a mistake. I think that'd be the best thing to do, prove us wrong, that we didn't approve you, if that happens.
Any other counselor comments or discussion? At this time, I believe we have a motion and a second. Uh, before I call for the vote, I just want to make sure we are clear that the, the resolution is, is in affirmative. So voting yes, you will be granting the waiver. Voting no would be, you'll be denying the waiver. And since this is, uh, kind of a complicated or, uh, issue, I would like to do this in a roll call vote, please, um, if we can. So it's, uh, been motioned and second. Uh, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. If not, if we can do this roll call vote, please.
Counselor Anderson?
No.
Counselor Blakely?
No.
Counselor de Forest?
Nay.
Counselor Duncan?
No.
President Levy?
Nay.
Counselor Pressil?
No.
Counselor Forbeck?
Yes.
Motion fails six to one.
Motion fails six to one. Thank you. Item eight ordinance, please, eight A.
Eight A is a proposed ordinance to amend various sections of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to city boards, committees, and commissions. This is a first reading.
Attorney Greger.
Uh, thank you. This was caught during the commission board committee appointment process. Um, we found that the city council president was, uh, a member of various boards and committees that you may or may not want to partake in, um, and certainly does an extensive list of that. So to clear up that ambiguity, um, we've provided just the optional nature of the city council president appointments, and that if you certainly could be appointed, subject to confirmation by the whole council, to any number of committees and commissions, um, you would be that city council representative, uh, as opposed to being mandatory, um, appointment for some of those. I will take any questions if anyone has any.
Okay. This is a first reading, uh, of this ordinance?
I move we take a vote through.
Move to layover.
They moved to layover?
Yep.
Okay. So it's a motion to layover by Pressil, is there a second?
A second.
Second by de Forest. Counselor comments? Questions? Seeing none, all in favor of laying this over to our next meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so granted. Item nine, please.
The individuals named, uh, as appointment for the seat of the council, um, are presented, and President Levy will be passing out those. And before you confirm those, I believe there were a couple changes to discuss. So I'll let you guys get those, and President Levy can explain them. All of those appointments can be taken with one motion unless you want them to be set aside, and then we can take them separately if you wish. Does everybody have one?
Yeah, everybody. Yeah, go ahead and pass them on.
Not yet. Okay.
Pass those on.
Get it under control here. Get it. Don't try to sabotage, don't try to sabotage my first meeting. We won't. We won't.
Does everyone have a copy at this particular moment?
Everybody's got one, Mr. President.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody's got one.
All right. All right. So basically what we did with the new council after the reorganization meeting is I asked each counselor to get back to me with a committee that they would like to serve on, uh, in the coming year. So at this time, I would read off, uh, the committees and the councils that are represented on those committees. For the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee, Counselor Anderson. Appointment Review Committee, Counselor Levy and Duncan. Business Improvement District Downtown Beloit Association, Counselor Pressil. Community Development Authority, Counselor Levy and Counselor Forbeck. Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors, Counselor Pressil. Equal Opportunities Commission, Counselor Blakely. The Landmarks Commission, Counselor Anderson. The Library Board, currently, if I'm not mistaken, that that board is currently filled at this particular time, and I think they have an opening in June, uh, so we'll be looking at sliding a counselor in there at that time. Metropolitan Planning Organization, Counselor Forbeck. Park Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission, Counselor Pressil. Plan Commissioner, Counselor de Forest. Traffic Review Committee, Counselor Blakely. Those are their appointments for the coming year. Is there a motion to accept? There's a motion by Anderson, second by Duncan. Any counselor comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those are granted. Item 10, counselor activities and upcoming events. Counsel Forbeck.
Well, I've been busy learning, I guess. Um, after seeing the agenda for today, I had a look up and see what para-transit was and, uh, another area of excellence, I think, that Beloit has. So I'm just anxious to start to attend my, uh, commission meetings and happy to be here and excited to learn more. Thanks.
Aye. Counselor Pressil?
Oh, uh.
Yeah, I'm doing it different.
I got it. I got it. Threw me off there going the other way.
That's my goal. That's my goal.
So anyway, when Bill Dor was in talking earlier about committees, I, he missed, he missed the two words that I thought was added to the description. We used to have a lot of ad hoc committees. When you look at my resume of service in the city, I spent, I spent a lot of time on like six ad hoc committees over a period of 15 years, maybe. Because we would have, we would assemble these committees with specialties or whatever were needed for a given subject. And that was very handy. It was very useful. And, and I think we haven't seen a lot of that in the last few years. So maybe he's on to something there. Anyway, that's my comment on that. Uh, May 6th is the first farmer's market coming up Saturday. It should be, um, should get off to a nice start. Uh, the weather should be good. And on May 12th, Downtown Beloit's Art Walk, annual art walk that happens. And then today, we have a new jewelry store downtown, Jewelry by Christopher. And it looks pretty fancy, way above my budget, but you should check it out because it's really cool. Anyway, uh, that's my, that's my summary.
Uh, basically what Pressil said, you know, we have those events coming up. Uh, on my behalf, I'm basically a shut in the next two weeks. I have finals, so, uh, that, that's pretty much what I'm doing the next couple of weeks. So, uh, don't be shocked if you don't see me until, uh, about May 10th, May 12th. I'll be hiding in my room studying, so that, that's all I got going on.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Blakely?
Yes, I had an opportunity recently to attend a community event. It was organized by the Monford Point Marine Association of Beloit and Rockford. It was the third annual awards banquet, um, that honors the legacy of the first African-Americans to serve in the United States Marine Corps. Between 1942 and 49, just a tiny history lesson, this isn't long, more than 20,000 African-American men were trained at Monford Point Boot Camp in Jacksonville, North Carolina. This was able to be established based on an equal opportunity executive order by FDR, President Roosevelt, that was passed back in 1941, to, um, eliminate employment discrimination for blacks engaged in defense production and in serving the military. President Harry Truman signed executive order later during his term in office, which required the complete desegregation of the military. So in 1949, following that, Monford Point was deactivated. And during the Korean War, the United States Marine Corps was fully integrated. So I just wanted to call the community's attention to this very worthwhile organization, the Monford Point Marine Association of Beloit and Rockford. It's open to veterans of any branch of the service and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel de Forest?
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I also would like to take the opportunity to jump on what Bill Dor had shared. I would love to see more resident engagement with more ad hoc committees. We have quite a few hot button issues, and it would be great to pull together residents on ad hoc committees to get their input, to share with us, and staff those with, uh, someone from, um, the city staff, and also a city counselor, just to serve as a liaison. So I hope that we consider that in the future. It would be wonderful. Um, and I know we've heard from residents that they would really like to be more involved in providing input to us and decisions that we make. I, um, I want to share a couple of events that are coming up that I will be participating in. One is the Reach a Heart Out activity at Hackett School on May 3rd. I'm looking forward to that. That will be wonderful. And I'll be doing a couple of, um, food pantry and food security-based trainings. Um, Second Harvest Food Bank is having a training for area pantries at the Catholic Multicultural Center in Madison on the 5th. And so any interest in, um, food access and food security, and would like to participate in that training, um, let me know, and I'd be happy to give you a ride with me. Um, and then also, I will be presenting at the Hunger Summit, which is a statewide summit that looks at food security issues. That will be held in Wisconsin Rapids on May 9th and 10th. Um, so I wanted to also raise the community awareness about that. And I wanted to make sure, I've heard still from a couple individuals who attended our meeting, uh, when I was out in California, who were concerned about, um, our 21-gun salute and what we were doing about it still. They were not letting this die. So I just want to ask that we make sure that we bring that forward to this council for discussion at some point in the near future. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, if I can, I, I believe, uh, Chief, correct if I'm wrong on that, that did you have a meeting, and I thought that things were kind of worked out in that?
We did work, yeah, we did work on the process.
Okay.
Could we have maybe a presentation on that?
Yeah, you could come in, kind of share that with us.
That'd be great.
At one of the meetings to just kind of, because I, I thought, uh, that next day, they were scheduled to have a meeting, and they, and I thought we had an email or something that said something had worked out. So if you could kind of present on that, I think that would help.
At a future meeting? That would be wonderful.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Vice President Duncan?
Okay. I went to Gaston School on April 19th to meet with Lynn Cruz and the Arrow of Light Cub Scouts PAC, PAC 625. It was great to talk with the children and see so many parents participating too. So often, we hear the kids don't have anything to do. So it was wonderful to see our youth involved in something positive. Their troop leader, Lynn, also shared that the Cub Scouts often walk and pick up trash around our community. So way to go. Kudos to all of you. In addition, I had the opportunity to participate in Project AIU at Beloit Memorial High School. AIU stands for Accept, Include, and Understand. It was well-attended, with 40 student leaders and some of their teachers. Chris Luther, Sean Fredericks, Adam Kreff, and there were others. Overall, it was an enjoyable experience. And all I can say is, the children and I got lots of life lessons. And I think that the students have more of an understanding of not only going to school, but to learn while in school, and more importantly, to stay in school. So I'm sure a lot of us left with that, from that conversation, with a lot of information. Thank you, thank you, thank you, to all the teachers that were involved in that endeavor. I think it would be great if somehow we could do something like that at the middle school level as well. Then, on Wednesday, April 6th, 26th, I joined the private open house of the Hendrix Heart Hospital at Beloit Health System. It is truly state of the art, and I am so grateful for the Hendrix and Packer families and the many other donors that contributed to make this a success. The heart hospital is so vital here in Beloit, and is a place that many more patients can get the care that they need. I want to give special thanks to the staff, to the directors, to the doctors, and Tim McKevitt for their vision and hard work to make this dream come true for our citizens. The public open house will take place at the hospital on Saturday, June 3rd, from 10:00 to 12:00 noon. Last but not least, I had the opportunity to be the master of ceremonies at Grinnell Hall Senior Center on Friday, April 28th. I want to thank Mike Furger, Ann Heel, and the public, the entire Public Works Department for their work on this, and, and for the hard work that they do with the trees and to help keep our community beautiful every day. Also, it is wonderful that we're partnering with Beloit College and have students assisting with tagging and studying the trees. There was an article in the BDN today, and also Carol Wickersham, I see you out there. We thank you for all your effort and your hard work on this project and many others for our city of Beloit. And then also, I want to thank my granddaughter, Ariana Duncan, for reading a poem at the event. She did a really good job, and I'm very proud of her. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Uh, I just have a couple for the committees or the ad hoc committees. I know several years ago, the, myself, along with the late, great, uh, Gary Seidel, some of you remember Gary, actually, it was his push to say we have too many, uh, committees and people are not attending, so we actually had a committee to study the committees. That was the name of the committee. Right? It was a committee to study the committees in the city of Beloit to see which ones that we thought, um, we need to keep, and the ones that we could eliminate because someone was doing double duty. So that's why we got it down to the committees that we have now.
You think these are ad hocs?
Okay, well, I'm just, that, we had some ad hocs in there too, but they, they, they were around forever. So, so that's why we want to make, I, I just wanted to bring some information as to why we are where we are with the committees, because the committee to study the committee, the ad hoc committee, was put together to minimize the committees. Uh, okay, now that we're all confused. Congratulations to the new counselors. Welcome to your first official, or second official, meeting. I encourage you, then, as you read your packet, if you have any questions, reach out to staff. They will definitely help you, um, along the way. Don't be afraid to call. Don't be afraid to, you know, stop by and see them. The, the staff in this, in the city of Beloit are wonderful. Um, they want to make sure that you fully understand what you're getting involved in. They don't want you to be down here confused. So even after a meeting, if someone says something and you truly don't understand it, don't feel bad about reaching out to them and asking them questions. And they're, they're good for, um, they will do, big asset. Okay? Uh, some of you may be looking, there's a new seating arrangement down here. Uh, we usually have our city manager sitting on the far end there. Uh, one of the things that, as council president, there's times during the meeting that I may want to ask her a question, and I'm usually, the president is usually looking down there, trying to get her attention, or not passing notes, but, uh, you know, saying, I have a question, so I thought this way would be easier to have her sitting here next to me. So if I have a question, I can just lean over and ask her to kind of keep things moving forward and moving along. But, um, that's all that I have, uh, as far as counselor activities and upcoming events. Item 11 is city manager's presentation.
11A is a presentation on the effects of substandard housing on health and society, and all of you have a presentation, um, in front of you.
Uh, good evening. For the new counselors that are here, my name is Teri Downing. I'm the Director of Community and Housing Services, which is a division of the Community Development Department. And we have Dennis Godwin here. He is a Duffy intern that was placed with me, uh, for the semester, and he did a very interesting project on, um, healthy homes and, uh, substandard housing. Um, I was at, towards the end of the year last year, I was involved with the, um, ASMA Coalition, uh, South Central, I don't remember the name of it now because it, we haven't met in a long time. Um, but, uh, that coalition talked about some of the health issues that happen, um, when houses, uh, become deteriorated. So, um, we do a lot of things in the city and with the Narciss coming up, and, uh, some of the, uh, work that we want to do in fixing up a lot of the neighborhoods and the housing stock, I thought this was a good opportunity to have some research done on what that actually means and why we do the things that we do with the community development funds that we get. There's a companion, uh, flow chart that I'm going to hand to Clinton to pass down, um, that goes with his presentation. So, uh, this is Dennis, and he'll take you through the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Oh, hi. Thank you so much for having me here today.
All right. Thank you. Oh, hi. Thank you so much for having me here today. I'm Dennis. As Teri said, I want to thank Teri for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of you, also being a fantastic supervisor through this entire semester. And also Carol Wickersham, who is the professor in charge of the Duffy Program that puts all of us Beloit students and community organizations around Beloit. So thank you. So to get started, thank you. My presentation is called Homes That Harm: Why Substandard Housing Is a Crisis for Children's Health and How to Prevent It. The purpose of this is to share the results of the research that I've been doing for all of the semester up until now. Also, to inform about the connection between housing and health, and to provide a new way to understand the housing rehabilitation programs that the city and other cities like Beloit across the United States are taking part in. So before we get started with all the data, I want to make a point that I think should be common sense, but can sometimes get away from us when we talk about large sets of data. First, housing is not deterministic, even though it can be tempting for some people to see the aggregate statistics and make assumptions about someone's potential or someone's worth, given what kind of house they grew up in. I want to state that this is absolutely not the purpose of this presentation. There's different effects that happen in different ways to different people, and there's no way to generalize one person's specific, specific experience based on the trends of thousands and thousands of people across the country. So these health statistics are in aggregate, and none of the conclusions necessarily apply on an individual level. So I just want to say that before we get started. But it is useful to look at big data sets like this, in order to understand what role government can play in making sure that people are as healthy as they can be. So why focus on substandard housing as a determinant for children's health? First, children ages zero to six spend most of their time at home growing up, especially the ones that aren't enrolled in pre-K programs. Housing quality is important for childhood physical, mental, and emotional health, and more closely matched to childhood health than things like housing affordability, renting versus owning, housing stability, and assistance, and even neighborhood for children this young. Once children get older, the neighborhood quality matters a lot in terms of their development. But ages zero to six, the quality, the physical quality of the housing is one of the most important factors in childhood early development. And housing is often not seen as a health issue, even though one study that I read estimated that around $100 million a year is the cost of substandard housing and the associated health effects in North Carolina in 2009. Unfortunately, there are no such studies for Wisconsin. I would have included those. And there's also a wave of interest in the early 2000s. This is a quote from one of the studies that kicked off that wave. Significant research demonstrates the harmful association of asthma, neurological damage, malnutrition, stunted growth, accidents and injury with household triggers like poor insulation, combustion appliances, cockroach and rodent infestation, dust mites, hyper- and hypothermia, unaffordable rent, and dangerous levels of lead in soil and household paint. So based on the research that I did this semester, I made a flowchart model, which might be a little messy and difficult to read, just because the effects are kind of messy and difficult to figure out. But there is another version on the backside of the sheet that isolates three different main pathways through which substandard housing affects children's health. So on the left, you can see the general model and the categories for each of these causes and effects. The chains of cause and effect are represented by these colored arrows. Red arrows are the pathway through which substandard housing affects respiratory health. Dark blue are the lead pathway, and light blue arrows are the family stress pathway. So I'm going to go through each of those in turn. First, asthma and bronchitis, it imposes costs in multiple ways. And it affects poorer families more than wealthier families that can afford treatment and also can afford to miss days of work to take care of their child. So it results in both medical expenses and lost income. So at the top, you have factors like poor insulation, abandonment and neglect, and inefficient heating that can cause a house to be damp, cold, and can develop mold and also pests. And mold and pests, especially cockroaches and mites, are a big trigger for asthma, and also something that can make children develop asthma in their early years. So this can lead to asthma and bronchitis and other respiratory infections, and also a weaker immune system, which result in increased school absences, which is a very big deal later on in life if a child develops asthma, which could lead to less workplace readiness, the direct cost of medical treatment for asthma. And these factors also contribute to a lower lifetime income, just marginally. Marginally increased crime due to less workplace participation readiness due to missed days of school. And once again, all these factors are, or all these effects are very small to nonexistent on the individual level, but across the society, they add up. And that's lower tax revenue, lower productivity. And I think this is one of the most important, a decreased well-being of citizens in general who are afflicted by these problems. All right. The second one is lead paint. This is the one that is the most well-researched. And it, lead poisoning and lead blood concentrations are measured in micrograms per deciliter of blood. And it's harmful at even very low levels. These are 2 to 10 micrograms per deciliter, and the main contributor is lead paint dust, but also pipes, lead pipes, industrial waste, and cigarette smoke. And here's some blood lead levels by demographic. And this is 2009. So as you can see, 24.7% of US children have blood lead levels, which are considered harmful at 2 to 10 micrograms per deciliter. And even more children have levels higher than that. I mean, not 24.7%, but there are children that have levels higher than that. And there's a lot of information here that is very interesting. But I think the most important one for this presentation is that in incomes, family incomes up to 200% of the federal poverty line, 60.2% of children in that income bracket have blood lead levels that are elevated to a point where it can be considerably harmful. And blood lead is cumulative. It doesn't go away from your system. Your system has no way to get rid of it. So even blood lead exposure at a young age can have effects down the line. All right. So acute lead poisoning is also significantly higher in Wisconsin than in general US levels. And this may be in part due to an older housing stock, especially in cities like Milwaukee and Beloit. 6.4% as compared to 4.3% as, according to the CDC report in 2015. And 200,000 children in Wisconsin below the age of six have blood lead levels above five micrograms per deciliter. And 21.6% of all children under the age of six in 2014. All right. So the qualities of substandard housing that lead to this are mostly lead paint. Around 66% of blood lead is due to, is due to lead paint flakes in the air, especially when people refinish or scrape off paint. It gets into the air, and it's very hard to clean at that point. So this causes prenatal exposure to toxins, so it can affect a baby in the womb when the mother is carrying the baby. And also increased blood lead concentrations later in life, which are directly tied to a small decrease in general cognitive functioning for every deciliter of blood lead. And it's a very small effect, but over the entire population, it's very clear that the effect exists. And also, an increased risk of acute lead poisoning, which is typically above 100 micrograms per deciliter, which can cause problems in the immune system. So there's also a lot of literature that very clearly connects blood lead concentrations to behavioral issues. It affects the brain in some way where it's more difficult to control impulses, is the current theory about it. And this is independent of any other effect. So blood lead is very harmful for society and for the people that are afflicted by this problem. So this can cause increased school absences, less workplace readiness, the direct cost of medical treatment, the decreased well-being of citizens, and those factors that you can see on the flowchart. I'm sorry, I should have said this at the beginning. You can stop me at any time with questions.
You're doing fine. You're doing fine.
Okay, wonderful. At the last-
We're just by margin, you at the end.
Okay.
We're just writing them all down.
Yeah. I know when I presented last week, someone asked me a question that definitely got me thinking more and made me look into things that I hadn't before.
Pipe.
Yeah, the lead pipe. That is an effect, yeah. So the third one is mental emotion health. This one is the hardest to study, but it's also a really big effect. So at ages zero to six, housing quality is one of the most important factors. And the way that this affects young children isn't necessarily because they realize that they're in a substandard house. It's because maternal stress really deeply affects children at this age group. And the maternal stress, especially of having a new housing problem, or a new problem with the pipes, or the stove, or any of those other factors, can cause a lot of stress in someone's life who's also struggling to pay rent, and can have a large effect on the development of children. So children, because of these effects, may act out, or they may withdraw into themselves. And these behavioral and psychological issues are expensive for society, and also decreases the well-being and the quality of life of people in society. So what can be done? The problem is that substandard housing affects individual quality of life and costs society money due to health effects. Renters or owners in suffering housing markets where there's not a lot of demand can't afford or can't find suitable housing to live in, because landlords in suffering housing markets have an incentive to abandon or neglect properties because they're not profitable, and others pay the price in this case. So there are some solutions. There are cost-effective housing quality interventions like insulation, furnace efficiency, these address the asthma pathway, lead paint abatement to reduce the price of lead, and purchase, rehabilitate, and resell for a generalized intervention for housing quality, which is something that Beloit also partakes in. So I'm just going to give you one example of a cost-benefit analysis. I'm an economics student, so I like to know that things are sort of value for money. So this is one example of how housing intervention can be a very good value for money for, for a town government. So this is lead paint, this is from a study in 2009 that uses data from the CDC and studies on lead and IQ. And the costs of lead control that identified were $1 to $11 billion. This is for the entire United States, for children that are affected by increased blood bubbles. And the benefits that I found to this lead abatement was savings for preventative care, which totaled $11 to $53 billion. The increase in lifetime earnings due to just that small increase in cognitive ability averaged across an entire population, which it estimated $165 to $233 billion. The increased tax revenue from this increased productivity would be $25 to $35 billion, which is about three times more than the cost itself. The savings on special education due to acute lead poisoning would be $30 to $146 million. The savings on attention deficit hyperactivity disorder due to lead would be $267 million. And the savings on direct costs of crime due to increased lead exposure would be $1.7 billion, for a total of $190 to $270 billion of benefit to the United States. And this is a return of investment from 17 to 1, to 221 to 1, which is very good. I think that a lot of investment firms would be very happy with that rate of return, and this is a government program. So in conclusion, substandard housing is a serious health hazard. Children from low-income families are the most at risk. And housing quality interventions such as lead paint abatement can be excellent value for money. And housing quality should be seen and can be seen as preventative medicine. Here's my references. All right. Thank you for listening to my presentation.
Thank you. Good presentation. Questions, Councilor Forrest.
Thank you. Thank you for this. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the focus on solutions. I, this is a bit of a commentary, but I think it really has been reinforced by what you've shared today, that we need to help homeowners and landlords find ways to help improve their quality of housing. Most landlords want to provide quality, affordable, safe, healthy housing for residents. And we have an excellent lead abatement program in our city, and many people don't know about it. And so I'm hoping that, you know, some of the research that you've done, and some of the direction you've given, will help our department think about ways that they can reach out, so that when they're issuing, you know, the warning and the citation, that, you know, they're also saying, "Hey, can I sit down and help you? Can I, when I do your inspection, can I sit down with you and help you fill out this application to apply for these resources?" I'd like to see our community neighborhood housing development staff really focus on being part of that solution, and really handholding people, you know, kind of an intimidating process on how they can get more resources to make their housing better. And I think the rent assistance piece is really important. I spent a chunk of my professional career bringing rent assistance funding into the city of Beloit, not to the city proper, but the city of Beloit. And it makes a difference in the family's stress, and then it makes a difference in the quality of housing. I mean, first of all, it's a voluntary inspection, because the landlord wants their rent, the tenant wants to pay their rent. They're inviting you to come in to do the inspection. You're identifying things, working with them to correct. And then there's a carrot. They get the back rent that they've been wanting, and then they get something tangible. They can actually use that back rent to address some of the problems that have occurred in the housing. So I, I'm excited by this, because I'm hoping it will help encourage more carrots, more resources, more incentives to help people that own property to do these things. We certainly have excellent landlords that are doing them already. And I'd like to see more resources available to help, you know, all landlords and all homeowners in our city. So thank you for this. This is wonderful, supportive information and data for us.
All right. Thank you. I'm so happy that it's helped.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Prishel.
Yeah. I was the guy who asked the question at the CDA meeting about the lead pipes, because I think that's an horizon issue. I think that's, as I think it was Julie or Teri mentioned, we've done a lot for lead abatement and the paint. And we have this ticking time bomb of lead paint. We, it just came up just after the water rate increase issues and stuff like that. And everything's fine, as long as nothing changes chemistry-wise with the water. And, and that's, that's a horizon issue. We had some of that in our, in our budgeting for the water services, and to allow for that. And there's a lot of homes out there, mine included, that still have lead pipe, or at least, maybe not the pipes, but the sodders. Anyway, they're encapsulated with plenty of lime, thanks to our hard water. And they're, you know, relatively safe and secure and everything, until somebody changes the chemistry, like they did in Flint, and it starts dissolving those deposits. And then things go haywire. So that's an horizon issue that's going to be down the road. And it came up, we had a little discussion about that. We found out that it was 1986 when they finally outlawed lead pipes. I was like stunned when you looked it up on Google or something. It was like, 1986? Wow. You know, when they finally eliminated it entirely. So anyway, that was our discussion at the CDA meeting. I just thought I'd mention that. Thank you.
Counselor Forrest.
Thank you. So related to that, I don't know, Julie or Teri or Lori, I mean, our lead abatement program, I mean, do we have ability to assist homeowners with lead pipe replacement? So is that something to look into, or is that, is it under the-
This is a separate issue. And actually, I've been working mostly with Harry Mathos in Water Resources in regard to concerns about that. We have to be very cautious, actually, because there are some other communities that have provided some financial opportunities for residents to replace lead pipes. And they're actually seeing increased levels of lead in those areas. So we have to be incredibly cautious. And what we do currently is we have a method of testing at residential homes, and going back to those homes, to consistently do spot testing across the city. And so you have to be careful about those solutions, because some of them have been implemented and have unintended consequences. So that's a separate issue that, really working in Public Works with the Water Utility, to ensure that we're giving residents the most information that they need, and how to address any issues that could be existing in their homes.
And I think that's a really good point. I think that, sorry. I think that also is relevant to the lead paint discussion, in that in the same study that I cited, it said that improper removal of lead paint costs-
Causes more harm.
Actually, 100 times more to clean than the lead paint itself. So $200,000 typically, if it's improperly removed, because then it's all in the air and the house is almost uninhabitable. So doing it right is really important.
Much like the asbestos that we dealt with in the industry. It was better until we disturbed it. And sometimes, our best efforts left us with, left us wanting. And this is a similar case there. And lead paint's the same way, if it's not disturbed.
Counselor Blakely.
Thank you.
And our lead grant is actually, we're out of lead grant funds at this point. And keep in mind that the 2018 federal budget shows CDPG in home going away completely. So it is important, in order to keep our programs running, for there to be additional federal dollars available. So, I mean, just to make a plug for talking to your elected officials, your federal officials, to try to keep those programs continuing, and not approving the reductions in the Trump budget.
Counselor Blakely.
Yes, I just wanted to say that this report is very thorough. I admire all the hard work that went into it. I wonder how long it took you to do? Did you spend the two terms on it, or even longer?
Oh, no. We, we have to do 90 hours of service to whatever organization we're placed in.
Sure.
And I believe this took around 80 hours of my 90 hours.
Okay. I would have that written down exactly. 82 and one half hours.
That's what we have to do, yeah.
Yes. Well, I really appreciate the collaboration between Beloit College and the city of Beloit, and look forward to doing more of that. I mean, you represent the college very well.
Thank you.
And this is a very intelligent and thorough report. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. I'll get to you. I do have a question.
Okay.
As far as the housing stock, one of the things that I, is dear to me, I'm going to kind of be pushing, I think I talked to Julie about it before, and Lori, even when I was campaigning, is when you go to various cities, and I don't know if it's the right terminology, but I invited it myself, you see this socioeconomic divide, is what I call it. is what I call it. And what I mean by that is you can travel in the city, and you can start to see when the economic conditions of residents of a particular city changes. Uh, my goal for the city here is, and I said it years ago, that we can blindfold someone, take them to any spot in Beloit, drop them off, take the blindfold off, and they could still say, this is a beautiful city, and it is a beautiful city. But what I mean by that is I want to eliminate the socioeconomic divide, that no matter where you go in the city, the housing, the housing stock is, is great, um, the residents, the, the, the streets are all the same, um, that I want to make sure that if we have areas to where the housing stock is, where not where it needs to be, or we need to step it up in those areas. I mean, that's just me personally, that's something that I've talked to the city manager about, and I'm going to continue to talk to about it, because I truly believe, I mean, I think you said it in your report, that if individuals live and they feel the city is helping them take care of something, they're going to do it as well. But if they have the desire to do something, and they just say, well, the city doesn't care about our neighborhood, that's going to play into them. Is it, isn't an excuse it could be? But I hear that sometime, well, why should I do anything the city doesn't care? Uh, this road has been tore up for the last 10 years, and why can't we get things taken care of? So I want to make sure that wherever we go in the city, and I'm not, please don't take it that I think we have crappy properties here, but I think there's areas that we can tune into and say, hey, we really need to step it up in this area, and I know you're doing that, but I just want to at least put it out there and go on record to say, I'm going to kind of keep pushing that along a little bit to making sure that we get where we need to get to. Counselor DeForest.
Yes, and I am absolutely in support with that, and we need resources for people of low income to make sure that they get the support they need to do that, so, um, and that's wonderful, so we need more resources for them. And I just wanted to make sure that the new counselors know that, um, we've had a previous Duffy intern, so it's been a wonderful collaboration, yeah, for a long time. Um, and Carol, we really appreciate you connecting.
You could too.
Wonderful, that's excellent.
Another economic student, actually. Honily enough.
Great, and thank you.
That's what we do in other states.
Okay, great.
I loved it that much.
Good, good. Well, and that's a compliment to Terry, and, um, our, our Duffy intern, I think last year, or maybe the year before, who focused on the arts, worked with Terry, so, um, they have good experiences with you. So thank you for your supervision and support of them, so.
Well, thank you for letting me come at this time. The adjunct.
Okay, anything else? Anything, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 12, reports from boards and city officers.
Item 12A is a resolution providing for the sale of $1,730,000 in general obligation promissory notes, series 2017A, and I believe, Mr. President, you are going to ask them to present them all.
Right, what we're going to do is make a presentation on all of, uh, 12, 12A through 12G, and then we'll vote on, vote on them separately versus having them make a presentation after each vote. Eric.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, so each year, we prepare an, uh, capital improvement program or a plan as part of the annual budget process. And in order to fund certain programs within that plan, we have to, uh, issue general obligation notes, general obligation bonds, um, state trust fund loans, or revenue bonds, many, uh, areas in which we have to borrow money. Uh, so tonight is the first step in that process on how we go about, uh, issuing bonds and notes. And so at this time, I would like to introduce Dawn Gunderson from Elders and Associates, who is our financial advisor, and she will walk you through the pre-sale reports. Um, the packets have been handed out, I do have one for you, um, and, uh, she will walk you through the information.
There are several resolutions on your agenda that kind of cover this financing plan, uh, so I will kind of talk in big picture and then walk through the documents. You've been provided two pre-sale reports, um, one for the general obligation promissory notes. Notes are issued under state statute for projects and capital equipment with a 10-year amortization schedule, 10 years or less. Uh, there are certain types of capital planning or capital financing that cannot be issued under bonds, and so they'll be included in notes, and one of those is equipment. So we've wa-, worked through your capital plan for 2017 with staff and with your bond attorney at Quarles and Brady, and have distinguished between which projects would be under the promissory notes and which will be under the bonds. Under general obligation corporate purpose bonds in the state of Wisconsin, the statute is very specific of what types of things can be financed. And as a result, every, um, financing is done by purpose. So you'll see in your agenda that you have one resolution for the promissory notes, and several individual resolutions for the bonds, and then a combining total of all of the, um, bond issues. So, um, as far as going into the details, I'm going to focus on the pre-sale report for the 2017B or the bond issue. And the reason I'm doing that is because the schedules included in here, um, encompass all of those that are in the promissory notes, so, um, it's kind of redundant if I walk through that. The narrative for each of them is a little bit more specific on the statute that allows for that type of financing, the call provisions of the issue, um, and the dates in which they are callable. But a lot of the other, uh, specifics would be quite similar into the two reports. So the first several pages of both of them is, is the, the narrative that defines, um, the, uh, statutory provisions, the authority, the terms, the issue, uh, we address bank qualification. The city does hold a rating on all of its debt, so the, with standard emporers at an A+, and we have requests, we will request a rating review of these two issues. But I'm going to ask that you turn to page, um, six of this document, and we'll kind of walk through the schedules. This is, is referred to as the issue sizing, it's all of the capital projects for 2017. Each item has been identified and listed, and is, it corresponds with your 2017 capital plan. And it breaks out which ones are financed with the notes and which ones are financed with the bonds. We have the issuance expenses, and a, a total at the very bottom of the two different issues. So the promissory notes, $1,730,000, and the bonds, $5,800,000. I also will point out that the bond issue does not only finance new capital items in the 2017 budget, but as your advisor, we, we are continually monitoring all of your outstanding debt and looking for any opportunities that, uh, we can save some money for the city. So your 2008 GEO bond issue is callable, or currently callable, and it was issued at higher interest rates than are in the market now, so we can refinance that for lower interest rates and generate savings. So that is incorporated into this issue, and it's about, um, 2.5 million dollars of the issue. At the bottom of this page, there's a little yellow boxed area, um, as I mentioned, the bonds are broken out by separate resolution, that has got the distinction and the dollar amounts that correspond with the resolutions that are in your packet. On page seven is an allocation of this issue, um, it's primarily for the benefit of staff. Uh, the part that we're refunding was supported by many different, um, projects, there's, there's tax increment district number six, number 10, there's some water, um, projects in there, sewer projects and stormwater projects, so we've broken out that refunding by all of those purposes for, um, staff to account for the uses. On page eight, or the large pullout page, is the, um, identification of all of the city's existing debt on the far left side, so the principal and interest payments on all the current outstanding debt, less any sources of funds outside of the levy that support that debt, to determine a, um, a net debt service levy. And then we've built your capital plan from that point forward, beginning with these two issues, the 2017 note issue and its amortization schedule, you'll note that it's a, a shorter, uh, amortization over the 10-year period. The 2017B, um, it's a longer amortization over the longer terms for, for purposes of bonds. And again, it's, it's structured with the refunding, uh, so your first maturities are a little larger to include that refunding. And this analysis, um, is intended to examine the, uh, debt policies that the city has in place now with, in terms of tax rate and, and levy and outstanding debt. So we always look ahead for the next several years. The city has identified a five-year capital plan with its capital items, so this incorporates, um, potential issues in 18, 19, 20, and 21. Uh, you adopt your budget annually, so you commit to the projects on an annual basis, but there has been an identification of potential for future projects. Lessening offsetting revenues, um, to a new debt service, and again, the city has policies in place that are identified in the budget of the thresholds of where they want to keep their tax rate at, and this plan, uh, illustrates that with your, your next five years, you'll still be able to maintain, um, your levy per thousand within your, your identified capital plan. Uh, the last schedule on page nine, that, that includes numbers, is an analysis to reflect the potential savings for the refunding of the 2008 bonds. Uh, the left-hand side is the existing issue, you'll see that the rates on the issue are 3.75 to 4.1. Um, we've, we've, uh, estimated those rates for the refunding on the far right, where those rates would be more like 1.3 to 2.85. So the, the boxed-in column on the far right is the anticipated savings on an annual basis, it ranges between 11,000 and 22,000 a year, uh, for a total of about 181,000. We always look to today's dollars for that, and, and, um, in the net present value basis, uh, it's about a 6% savings, or about 153,000 dollars is our projection for savings on that. Uh, as Eric mentioned, this is the initial resolutions on all of these. Um, we will, from this point, be preparing a, a bond prospectus and official statement, uh, which will present to the rating agency and seek a rating on these issues, and go out to market, uh, for the final sale results and back to you at your, your meeting on June 5th. Um, the last schedule that's included is to give you an idea where interest rates have been over the last five years. Um, you can see the, the highest point was in Ju-, July of 2013, uh, our lowest was in July of 2016. Rates have gone up since then, however, we're still right below the average over their last five-year period, so still a favorable, um, market condition for, for issuing debt, and certainly for taking advantage of the refunding opportunity. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, again, the, the note issue has the similar schedules, but the, the narrative is, is relative to that issue itself.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I can't remember, how do we determine the revenue that's coming in from our TIDS and, and enterprise funds? How do we determine what that amount will be?
Um, when the, when the debt is issued, the purpose that it was financing, there's an amount that was paying for TIF-related projects. There was a, an amortization structure that was defined for that. We always look at the cash flow of the districts and structure around that to, to help, um, ensure that there's revenue available.
It's realistic, it's a conservative forecast?
Yeah, so if you look on that allocation page, again, um, page seven, you'll see that the third set of numbers in is TID 6. Obviously, there's fewer years remaining on that district versus the TID 10. They're structured within that timeframe of when the district has revenues to pay for that. And then the size was determined by the amount of projects it funded at the time the money was borrowed.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none at this time, I think we'll entertain, uh, the motions to approve 12A through 12B, they will be read separately and voted on separately. Madam Clark, would you like to do that?
Yes, correct. So 12, 12A is a resolution providing for the sale of $1,730,000 in general obligation promissory notes, series 2017A.
If you've heard the presentation at all, is there a motion for approval?
I say move.
Motion by Forback, second by Prashil, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 7-0, 12B, please.
12B is an initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed 225,000 for community development projects.
There is a motion.
Second.
Motion by Blakely, second by DeForest. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, item 12C, please.
12C is an initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $370,000 for building to housing machinery and equipment.
Is there a motion? Motion by DeForest. Second by Duncan, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 7-0, 12D, please.
12D is an initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed 545,000 for parks and public grounds projects.
Motion.
Just a move.
Prashil, second, uh, Anderson, uh, questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passing 7-0, 12E, please.
12E is an initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed 2,130,000 for street improvement projects.
Motion.
So move.
Blakely, second.
Second.
Forback. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 7-0, 12G, please.
12F?
12F, I already cut that out.
12F is a resolution authorizing $2,530,000 general obligation refunding bonds.
There are motion.
So move.
Forback, second by Prashil. Questions, comments?
Wonderful, thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 7-0, 12G.
12G is a resolution director, directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issues and providing for the sale of not to exceed 5.8 million general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2017B.
So, second, and you are correct, Counselor DeForest. Uh, at this time, I think this one is a roll call vote for this one?
No, no roll call.
Back to the next time? Okay, 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 it's okay. All in favor?
I thought so too.
Let's do that again, Counselor DeForest was like, okay, so there was a, there was a motion, there was a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 7-0, uh, 12H.
The city will entertain a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, um, sub 1F.
Okay, is there a motion? Motion by Duncan, second by Prashil, all in favor of going into closed session, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, we are going into closed session, we will not, to the public that's watching and sitting out here, we will not be coming back out into open session to take any action after this, so at this point, the rest of you are adjourned. Thank you. No. Lori, do I shut it down?